I call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen on behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office. I want to welcome you to our February 8th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30 and 330 and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Channels 30 and 330 from 10:00 tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, so I will also read a portion of related to the suspending of certain provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to Section Senate Bill 2475, signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18. This meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The Board is meeting in person today. All hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town's website at www.shrewsburyma.gov coronavirus. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To listen to this meeting, dial 1-747-248-7354 and enter the following PIN, 153-991-490. Please mute your device by pressing star six. Colleagues, under Preliminary, first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved.
Have been moved in a second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve minutes of January 11th, 2022, and January 25th, 2022.
Move approval.
Have been moved in a second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is under announcements reports. Any announcements or reports? I have a few. Like to announce the retirement of Officer Peter Capalbo. On Monday, January 31st, 2022, Officer Peter Capalbo retired after serving as a Shrewsbury Police Officer for 31 years. On Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, Officer Capalbo was sworn in as a Special Police Officer, Special Police Officer's Assistant Working Police Details in Town. We would like to thank Officer Capalbo for his outstanding service over 31 years, as well as expected continued service and dedication to the Shrewsbury community and the Shrewsbury Police Department. Second item, we've had a couple storms lately. We want to thank our DPW crew, including drivers, mechanics, administrative staff, and Water, Sew, and Parks Divisions for all of their hard work before, during, and after all the snowstorms the town has experienced so far this season to keep our roads clear and safe. Additionally, helping out to the police, Shrewsbury Fire Department, excuse me, everyone could do their part by keeping snow and ice five feet away from fire hydrants. If anyone has concerns regarding snow cleanup, please utilize C Click Fix on DPW's website to report them. And then the third item I have is talking trash and recycling, keeping Shrewsbury beautiful. Are you confused about what goes in your trash bin and what goes in your recycling bin? You're not alone. On Thursday, February 17th, from 7:00 to 8:15 PM, please attend Keep Massachusetts Beautiful's Talking Trash and Recycling via Zoom to learn what really happens to our trash and recyclables here in Shrewsbury. Registration link and more details are available on the Parks and Recreation page of the Town's website. And that is it for announcements.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, along with the manager and the town moderator, I attended a small reception, a COVID-appropriate reception in the police station garage to celebrate and honor Officer Capalbo on his retirement. It was a very nice event before he took his, I guess his last, I don't know the exact phrasing, his last call or his last ride. And I've had the opportunity to know Peter far longer than the 31 years he's been on the force, and I want to thank him for all he's done for 31 years of service to this community.
Thank you, Mr. DePaul.
I do have one thing, and honestly, I forgot about it to be asked, but if I wait till the next meeting, I'm going to completely forget. You know, the town typically will take advantage of grant opportunities, applying for grant opportunities when they're available. And the opportunity came up, money for a trail to either build them, repair them, whatever, extend them. And on very short notice, like eight days before an application was due, the planning department became aware of it. And Mr. Cahill, Ms. McAllister did an unbelievable job, dropped what they were doing, put all their efforts behind that. The town engineer, Andy Truman, and a GIS engineer, Dean McCollum, just did an unbelievable amount of work. And then, like, actually, really, six or seven days, got the application together for planning money to see if the trail, the paved trail around Jordan Pond, at Jordan Pond, could be extended, hopefully, all the way around the pond and maybe have a couple of other access points. But I was really, really impressed with how fast they did that. It's a lot of work, and to do that in such a short period of time was incredible. So we don't know if we're going to get the grant yet, but even that, the effort, I think, was heroic to make that kind of an effort in, you know, about a week. We're lucky that we have those people to do it because, quite honestly, I didn't think we were going to be able to get it done. So anyways, I just wanted to thank them for their great work, and hopefully, it'll result in a positive outcome.
Thank you, Mr. DePaul. Anything else? We'll go, the next item on the agenda, actually, next to Town Manager's Report, and then under Special Reports, Actions Updates, the COVID-19 Update. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. Just a couple updates this evening. I wanted to provide information to the community about the National Community Survey that we have released as part of our strategic planning process and our 2030 vision for the town of Shrewsbury. Initial wave of postcards have gone out to residents. They have been hitting mailboxes over the past few weekdays. Not every household will receive a postcard in the first round. It's a scientifically sample, a random sample of the community, and it's the baseline group. Wave two will invite all residents into, participate into the survey, and will provide additional information how to access both paper copies and electronic access into the survey. So everyone will be, will have the opportunity to provide their input, feedback on services and how we operate the local government. So we're really excited to engage with Polco and keep your eye on your mailbox for a postcard to access this link in the near future, one way or another. We also have gone under agreement with the UMass Collins Center to conduct a strategic communications analysis for town operations. The first phase of that initiative will be the assessment of the needs of the underserved populations and a service delivery plan for collaborating with local agencies and internal initiatives to reach those underserved populations. So there's going to be a primary focus on non-homeowners, at least in this original phase, as it was identified during the early phases of COVID, that we didn't have great access into those renting and those in some of the more concentrated housing areas within the community. Phase two of that project would include the assessment of current townwide communication efforts and capacity. And Phase four, or the second part of Phase two, would also develop a communications plan, those for public safety and non-public safety communication. So really looking forward to that project. It's funds that the Board put in place through American Rescue Plan Act allocation from the federal government. Also wanted to acknowledge the receipt of a $96,000 grant for Americans with Disability Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. The town will be partnering with CMRPC and the Institute for Human Centered Design to conduct the self-evaluation. Look at programs, facilities. We're going to do a GIS study and sidewalk assessment and then develop the transition plan. So we will keep the Board and the community advised, and we'll be looking for input during several phases of that project. And then, if I may, I would also just like to honor the service of Officer Peter Capalbo. I remember literally my first day coming in as Town Manager. He greeted me in the parking lot and has been just a wonderful person to chat with and stay connected to the community, too, throughout my time here with him. So 32 years is quite a ride for a police officer, and really want to thank him for his service and commitment to this community. So I will now jump over to the COVID update. So I'm having some technical issues, but I'll be happy to just run through the numbers with the Board this evening, and we can post the report online. So from the beginning of the pandemic through February 8th today, there's been 7,072 positive cases in town. That's 315 additional cases since it was reported at your last meeting on January 25th. 112 cases in the last seven days. So we're definitely well off of the highs that we had in early January, where we were up to almost 800 cases in a single week. We're very grateful that we are seeing these numbers improve. The town continues to report total cases on a weekly basis. Currently, the Town Hall is only open by appointment only, but it will reopen to the public for normal business conditions without an appointment effective a week next Monday. So very happy to welcome the public back in without appointment. There's been no additional deaths since we last reported to the Board. And I just wanted to provide a note to the community that the Board of Health will be meeting on February 18th. Under, at that time, I anticipate them reconsidering the mask mandate in public building spaces and businesses. We've received a lot of inquiries, especially with the City of Worcester taking action on that yesterday. And they had some longer leads on their time and notification, and I would anticipate that if the Shrewsbury Board of Health follows similar suit, given the great data that we're looking at, that we wouldn't have such a long lead time, and actually, the implementation or the removal of the mandate may go away on a consistent timing with the City of Worcester's initiative. So happy to answer any questions, or otherwise, I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you. Any question or comments for Mr. Mizikar?
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your report. Board members, if I may, I'd ask that we switch and go to financial business after and go directly to meetings and hearings, given that the next three items, the folks are here, and they've already waited, and I appreciate your patience. So we'll go to meetings, hearings. We have a past 7:05 of public hearing with Richard Ricker, Esquire Attorney for Matt McGovern, McGovern Auto Group Services, Inc., does business as McGovern Collision, 420 Boston Turnpike for a garage license. I'll invite Mr. Ricker to introduce himself or anyone else with him, and then we can open up, this is a public hearing, and open that up as part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I know you know me, but my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney with offices at 11 Maple Avenue. I'm here tonight with Matt McGovern, who is the head of McGovern Auto Group and various other enterprises, having to do with McGovern Auto Enterprises. We also have John Shirkenbeck, who is the Vice President of Corporate Development in the front row, as well as Garrett Horstfall, who is here from Kelly Engineering Group to run through the plan with us for this property. If I may just begin relative to the garage license. I'd like to talk, if I could, about all three of these matters together, if that would be acceptable to you, knowing that you're going to deal with them separately, because the plan calls for somewhat of a flexible approach to the parking of automobiles and repair automobiles and inventory automobiles that we're asking you to allow. The garage license that is being requested is for a collision center and a fit-up center for the municipal dealership operations that McGovern Auto has. The municipal dealership is, the municipal auto dealership is, typically, you see police cars fitted up and fire vehicles fitted up and that type of vehicle. And so that operation is in Framingham, and this would be a facility to fit those vehicles up when they come from the factory and they need the lights and the sirens and all the things that go with these vehicles. The collision center is to serve several of the McGovern Auto dealerships. As you know, he, they operate the BMW dealership in Shrewsbury and the Audi dealership in Shrewsbury. There's also a, the Audubon in Westboro, as well as the GMC dealership in Westboro. And you have the Framingham, of course, as I just mentioned, the Framingham dealership for municipal auto sales. This collision center would serve those, and potentially even other local, semi-local dealerships. And basically, the garage license is to operate this center. And we would anticipate that he would be, this would be bringing somewhere in the range of 50 to 60 jobs into town for this purpose. There is a, as you know, the property at 420 Boston Turnpike has quite a long history. It was, as you know, fairly rundown. I personally have spoken in the past with three of the most recent fire chiefs, and each of those conversations, it was related to me that they felt that those buildings were the most dangerous in this community. This proposal, as you will see, calls for the raising and demolishing of most of these buildings on this site. And the refurbishing of one of the buildings, frankly, I guess refurbishing is a nice way of putting it, because there's not going to be much left except the steel frame, and I think one maybe cement wall, right?
Yeah.
But it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility intended to bring in, you know, quality jobs and state-of-the-art equipment. You're going to have well-paid service technicians, and basically, it is a refurbishing of the whole site. The, as I say, it would also include the McGovern Municipal Sales Dealership work at this, at this center. The requested inventory and storage parking that we're going to talk about, we've asked you for a combination of 333 spaces on this parcel. As you know, this is a very large parcel of land. It has a very large parking lot, which also will be refurbished as part of the redevelopment. The 333 spaces would be for repair and for storage of inventory. So what I'm suggesting to you is there will be, if you allow this, there would be a flexing of numbers as necessary in the business. We couldn't really, it's hard to deal with, you know, a strict number of just inventory spaces, a strict number of repair spaces, because we don't know at any given time, you know, that two or three vehicles or 10 vehicles are going to come in for repair or whatever. But obviously, we're limited by the finite number of 333 for the two dealerships. And as I say, repair spaces would fluctuate that somewhat, because also in the mix are the spaces that are required for zoning. And Garrett will get into that, but I think it's 128 spaces additionally. As you know, and I would point out that the job, the jobs that we're talking about here, the wages will range in the range of $50,000 to $160,000. So it's a, it's a nice addition to the community. It's, it's putting good quality jobs at this location, something that, again, I would suggest to you respectfully, we haven't seen at this particular location. Just the fact that Matt's organization bought the property, upgrades it, as you know, it helps the tax base, Mr. Mizikar. And the, the building of this state-of-the-art center will certainly upgrade the overall property. As you know, we will also need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is presently scheduled for this month on the 28th. In addition to that, we'll have to deal with conservation and with the Planning Board, all of which will take place, hopefully, if you allow this to move forward, as we're asking you to, in the very near future, because obviously, Matt would like to get moving with this project. Time is of the essence in these types of things, and he's got a, he's got a serious investment here and wants to, wants to do it and do it right. So if I could ask Garrett Horstfall to now talk about the plan, what you see here is the aerial of the, the present, of what you have at present, there's a lot of building there, much of which is going to come down.
Thank you, Richard. Good evening. Garrett Horstfall with Kelly Engineering Group, based in Braintree. So as Richard stated, this building, you know, has seen its day, and as you can tell from the aerial photo, you know, the site itself has seen its day. So as we mentioned, we will be knocking down this smaller front building, and approximately half of this larger building will be removed as well, roughly the ridge line to the roof, located approximately half of the building. So the remainder of the proposed building will be about 112,000 square feet on the ground level, with small mezzanine level on the second level, primarily for parts storage, and there's a small office component associated with that. We have coordinated with Patty Sheehan, the Building Inspector, throughout the past few weeks regarding the parking for zoning. We've come to an agreement with her about, there's about 127 spaces required per zoning, and that's based off of an office component, a small warehouse component, as well as a non-residential establishment. So we are providing 128 spaces per zoning with 127 spaces required. We've denoted these spaces generally in the blue, color-coded on this proposed plan. The storage spaces would primarily be in the orange colors and the magenta colors up front. I do want to note that there is a significant grade change on Route 9, so a lot of these spaces won't be visible from the road, and we will be working with the landscape architect to really spruce up the frontage long, Route 9, as well as, you know, providing street trees. As you, as we know, the site has, you know, seen its day, and it will be, you know, modernized, will be completely redoing the paving system, adding stormwater upgrades, new utilities to serve the building for public safety and the like. We have coordinated with the Fire Department for safety access around the rear of the building, which will be permitted with conservation, as well as the rest of the work in the buffer zone. So it will be a completely, you know, modernized site, brand-new paving, new drainage system, you know, new water system set up the building for fire safety and suppression. And we do think it's a, you know, substantial improvement to the property. We are removing, you know, various amounts of pavement along the edges of the buffer zone where we see fit, and we think it's a beneficial project for the town and for Matt's business as well.
And I would add that, again, it's a substantial investment, as you can tell, but Matt has done the right thing. He's bought into this property and put it back on the tax rolls and actively tax-paying landowner, which, as you all know, was not happening before. So I think it's all good news for the town, and I hope you agree.
Thank you. Well, let's take up Agenda Item Number Seven. Although it's a description of the next three items, it's a public hearing, so can I get a motion open, the public hearing?
So moved.
Have been moved in a second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. Now we, the public hearing is open. Are there any questions or comments, or is there anyone on the line? Why don't we start with questions here, if there's anyone, Mr. DePaul, given this is hybrid.
Thank you. I'm glad to see something getting done on the site. Can you just clarify a couple of things?
Sure.
There's 127 spaces that are required per zoning?
Yes. Based on the size of the building?
I understand. Is that a particular, is, what does 127 comprise? Is it broken up of office?
There's a small office component, but the rest of it is basically the, there's storage in the mezzanine that requires a space or two. The square footage space of the building itself is what's driving most of that part.
But I just want to make sure, understand, and I know we're not the zoning board, the planning board, but I still want to understand what we're talking about.
Sure.
The 127 spaces are per the zoning for the use, type of use it is. You're saying there's only going to be 50 to 60 employees?
That's what, that's what we anticipate, yes.
So what are all those other spaces intended to be used for, then?
Well, they're required. So, I mean, it's, you know, there will be, we anticipate that you will have people coming to this, this site, for instance, people that are dealing with us relative to municipal fit-ups. You're going to have people coming to the site to talk about the fit-ups with the management. You will have visitors to the site, there's no question about it. You'll have some of the salespeople from some of the other, some of the other locations, some of the dealerships might, might come if they're looking for a particular inventory or whatever. But that number is really driven by the size of the building.
And it's, it's a lot of parking, and I find it hard to put in an operation that big that you're going to use 127 spaces for that, but I'm just thinking.
I do too, I do too, but, you know.
I know you're going to do it, and it's not us, but did you consider trying to set aside some of the spaces as open space to be converted that we've done before? You set aside, and if you need it, you have to put it in?
Well, we're also recognizing that, you know, there's a, there's a large section of land at the upper right-hand side there that we're not developing at this time, okay?
Right.
So it could be anticipated that those spaces could be taken up at some stage anyway.
All right.
And I think the, the setting aside spaces for open space sort of, sort of thing is something that we could explore with the Planning Board if that's something that they wanted to discuss.
That's their call, but I mean, just, that's all.
Yeah.
As you know, it's a big parking area.
It is.
A big paved area.
It is.
And then on the, the other 333 spaces, are those, are the 133 spaces for vehicle storage, for new vehicle storage, for fit-up, or cars waiting to be sold, off-site storage for, or we're, I guess, I guess the bottom-line question is, where are these cars that are going to be going into the collision center going to be stored?
Some of them will be in this 333 spaces.
They will be in there?
Yes, yeah. There's 80, there's 80 stalls inside the building for vehicles being repaired.
Okay.
So, and vehicles being fitted up, I should say. You know, some, one wing is for fit-up and the other is for repair, as I understand it.
Yeah.
So, so there's 80 stalls inside for, for that. So do we anticipate that half would be used for repair vehicles? No, we don't. That's why we, we are asking for the numbers we're asking for in the inventory. He needs, he really needs to deal with his manufacturer's requirements for him buying inventory to store it.
Okay. Typically, when we talk about garage licenses, though, we don't care what you store inside the building, because you can't see it from the outside at night. I mean, we do, I mean, what you're going to do is you're going to have however many cars. But outside, we like to try to have, where it's possible, the, in an operation this big, it's not going to apply, limit the number of vehicles that are crashed, whatever you want to call it, waiting to repair, either limit that, which I, I wouldn't personally recommend on this site, but also to have it, have them screened from public view, because they obviously don't have the same appeal as new cars waiting for fit-up, so.
If I could address that one issue, because I brought that issue up myself.
Okay.
Earlier this week. Garrett, where would the? Garrett, where would the repair vehicles generally be?
So we've, you know, strategically located the, you know, designated repair spaces further away from Route Nine as, it would basically be in this central orange pod. So we've tried to dedicate that area as for the vehicles waiting for repair, you know, as particularly, just so they're not seen from view, just we've had that concern ourselves. So we have tried our best to address that by locating it away from Route Nine. It's approximately, I believe, about three hundred feet from the state highway right away. There's an existing, you know, significant existing vegetative buffer throughout here as well to screen those vehicles.
Just one last question.
Sure, Mr. DiPaolo.
What about outside storage, or how are you going to handle the dented fenders, whatever the junk that's going to be picked up? Where's that going to be stored? You're going to, you're going to, obviously, if you're doing repair work, you're going to have some...
Right.
We have metal containers, dumpsters, that are, will be adjacent to the building that will be frequently picked up.
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, they're not, they'll be all contained.
Okay, so it's not going to be a yard with...
Absolutely not.
It's not a salvage yard, it's clearly not, yeah.
No, sometimes the smaller guys, they don't have that kind of room. They, they store the stuff outside, just one...
Yeah.
... defense there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one.
Sure, Mrs. Gaslin.
On the left side, what's going in that area? You know, the second driveway, I think, is there?
That will remain a driveway. That will remain an access driveway. That's all that is. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? And I know that...
Actually, if I have one more, if I could. Go ahead. In a space that big, I assume that you have a place to unload those things, unload those vehicles on the site as opposed to on the road?
Correct. So we have a thirty-foot-wide driveway through the middle, and as well as exceeds thirty feet wide. Thirty feet wide is a standard tractor-trailer driveway width, so there is sufficient circulation. We have also run the, you know, fire truck templates through here as well for fire safety access.
So we've heard from other people before, we're not going to load on the street and unload on the street.
But bear in mind, you know...
I, I know, I, this is a big enough site.
And this isn't a parking lot, and this is not a parking lot where you're going to have a lot of pedestrian activity outside of vehicles. This is inventory, storage, and repair vehicle and fit-up storage.
No, I was thinking more of the truck on the side of Route Nine, the car coming across that hill, but...
Well, number one, you could never do it at that location. That's one of the, that's one of the problems with that entrance way. And that's one of the requests we have for the ZBA, is to keep that entrance way where it is, because you've got sightline issues there that, that couldn't be addressed if, if we had to move that entrance on Route Nine. So that's, it, it's just, it would not happen. Matt's here to tell you it's not going to happen.
Absolutely.
So...
Yeah, that's a, that's a really dangerous place to do it. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Notice that there is a caller online. If the caller online in hybrid is new for us here at Star Six, if there are any questions or comments? If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Have you moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the license application of McGovern Auto Group Corporation Services, Inc., doing business as McGovern Collision, four-twenty Boston Turnpike, for a garage license. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m. Saturday, seven-thirty a.m. to four p.m.
Second. Have you moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have agenda items number eight and nine. Mr. Ricker has presented information on both of those. Any questions or comments specifically on those items from the board? Any action on this?
You already said three hundred and thirty-three cars, and they'd be coming from...
That's the max. They'd be coming from the BMW and the Audi.
And they'll be the cars for fit-up. That's all in the three thirty-three.
That's correct.
Mr. LeBeau.
I have a question. Unfortunately, our Apple devices don't always take Google documents so well, and I can't see the plans right here.
Okay.
I'm just, there's two applications that look to me to be very similar. Can you explain to me why you're seeking two applications? I'm sure if I could see the plans, I could figure it out, but I'm confused.
Well, the two applications are because of the two different dealerships, that's all.
Okay.
That's all. And I wanted to combine the request to the three thirty-three and...
And two different addresses, okay.
Right, and, and to, and I, and one of the reasons why I wanted to have us here tonight was to explain to you the need for flexibility within that three thirty-three.
But we did that on South Street and Route Nine anyways, right? Same thing.
Yep.
We tried to designate.
Yep. It's just hard to, you know, go by a specific number.
Right.
That's the problem. We had substantial negotiations with the building department about this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Mizikar, any questions or comments on this? Or comments? Okay.
So would a motion be something to the effect of to approve the request for storage, parking at four-twenty Boston Turnpike for BMW of Shrewsbury and also Audi of Shrewsbury for three hundred, is it three thirty exactly?
Three thirty-three.
Three thirty-three for purposes of inventory storage and storing vehicles for repair? Is that correct?
For the purpose of inventory storage is what I'm asking for in this phase of these, of this discussion.
Or inventory storage, okay. I'm sorry, I'm at the other side again, I thought. And that would be, that would be an appropriate motion?
Yes.
Then that's the motion I just made.
Mr. LeBeau said, yes.
And I will...
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That covers items eight and nine. We've combined those two, right?
Yep.
So did you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to, we don't always have the opportunity to have an investor in town like Mr. McGovern. We just want to extend our appreciation for your continued investment in the community and the, the jobs that you provide. And this is a site in town that we've all had our eye on and hoping someone like yourself would come along and redevelop it, and it's truly appreciated.
Great, thank you. We'll, we'll make it great.
Yeah, we look forward to it. Thank you for coming this evening, and thanks for your patience. Anyway, we started...
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
When's ZVA? What date is...
February twenty-eighth.
So next item in the agenda, we'll go back to item six under financial business, fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget review. I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Mizikar.
I need to...
Do we want to take a five-minute, do we want to do a...
Mark's having a bad signal. Okay. Can we just reset everything, Taylor?
Good night.
Hey, Rich.
Want to take a five-minute recess to get this started?
Yeah, we can. Just take a second.
Sure.
We are back, just working through some technical difficulties. We'll get back to agenda item number six under financial business, fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget review. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to work through the fiscal, the first phase of the fiscal year twenty-three budget. The budget in accordance with the general bylaws in anticipation of town meeting being set within the first, or second or third week of May. We will be publishing fiscal projection one by Friday, February eleventh, so this Friday, so I want to give the board an opportunity to see the latest thinking with regards to the department's budget recommendations that I'm making and what they had submitted, and we'll go through some highlights related there, too. So provide an update to the board on some changes that we've made to the revenue model since we published the revenue manual in October. And then I'll work through the regular municipal nonutility budgets, the utility budgets, and we'll talk about some staffing levels. So with regards to the revenues, on every slide that I'm going to work through tonight, fiscal projection one, which is the town manager's initial recommendation, is the first column with numbers on the screen, and it'll go back in time farther to the right that you go, with the analysis on the far right-hand side. So there's been no changes within the, the general taxation and the tax levy. That's well documented. It includes a two-and-a-half percent tax levy increase, takes full advantage of the operational override that was passed in May of 2021, and it secures sufficient tax resources for our debt service schedule, but that is a decline year-over-year of about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from taxation to, to cover our debt service. Estate aid has increased based upon the governor's initial budget, so we're able to take advantage of that. It's a, it's an increase in general unrestricted aid and a decrease in some of the other offset areas that are used for specific purposes. So in, in all in all, it is a, a net positive increase for unrestricted revenues that come in from state aid. Local receipts, we are increasing by three-hundred thousand dollars from eleven-point-six to eleven-point-nine million dollars. I'll remind the board that actual receipts for fiscal year 2021 were thirteen-point-one million, and we have made it sufficiently through the year to see strong revenue numbers continuing. Motor vehicle excise commitment one is being processed by the assessors department, which is the largest of the year, and it is up about two-hundred thousand dollars over the prior year. With regards to utility revenue, this is an evolving number as we continue to look at the capital needs across the utilities, but this revenue level provides sufficient funding for balanced operations and indirect costs to fund administrative services in the operating budget associated with our rate generating utilities, water and sewer, stormwater, and pay-as-you throw. Free cash is a slight increase based upon the initiatives that we're undertaking within the capital improvement plan, which we won't go into great detail on tonight, and some other one-time costs that we're anticipating. It does include seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in free cash to bolster the general stabilization account and continue to work towards that policy level. Other available funds are primarily funds that come in from Selco for tax levy reduction and debt service coverage that's associated with their operations. And the reduction of the tax levy, again, is sufficient, or mostly from Selco, to help offset tax levy. So in total, we're proposing the use of one hundred and sixty-four million, eight-hundred-and-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. That is a slight decrease of about two million dollars year-over-year, but it is a little bit higher, six-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars higher than was projected through the revenue manual, which was published in October. So with a balanced budget, we would be proposing at this point one hundred and sixty-four million dollars in total expenditures at the annual town meeting for their consideration. Of course, the operating budget represents the largest single component of those total expenditures. Fiscal projection one, and my recommendation, is to allocate one million, one hundred and thirty-eight million, four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for operations. This includes seventy-nine million, three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars for the Shrewsbury Public Schools. It covers our debt service obligations, and I'm going to work through the highlights and changes in the other aspects of the municipal operations now as we move forward. In total, the operating budget is increasing one-point-six-eight percent year-over-year, and the largest decrease, of course, as shown on the screen, is a twenty-two percent reduction in total debt service obligations. This is a result of the Shrewsbury High School being, debt being satisfied in fiscal year twenty-two, and the continued benefit, full-year benefit for the refinancing of the Shrewsbury Fire Station project, which provided a much lower interest rate when we refinanced that last spring. So just take the opportunity to remind members of the public the core goals that the Board of Selectmen established in the summer of 2021. There are certainly sub-criteria under each one of these four goals, but these are the primary areas of focus as we think about spending in the future, and await the detailed analysis that we're developing through the strategic plan. Includes building and maintaining reliable infrastructure, promoting economic growth, ensuring quality of life, and ensuring effective government operations. So the municipal highlights within the budget, which are responsive to securing the infrastructure and ensuring a high quality of life, I suggest to be the following. It'd be the addition of an assistant DPW director, which would be responsible for energy management and climate resiliency, along with general support to the Department of Public Works Director and associated divisions. Would be for the enhancement of solid waste collection program to hopefully reduce deficiencies, especially in the areas of yard waste program and services. We would establish the town's first tree planting program. We've historically had a forestry program, but never implemented or funded a tree planting program, so we're proposing that. Provide staffing increases within the police department to meet service demands. Continues our long-range staffing plan for the fire department. Increases four additional lieutenant positions. That's not a net increase in total positions for the fire department, but adds those four additional ranks, or four additional lieutenant positions. Fully funds the 2018 SAFER grant positions. As of January one, 2023, those positions will be fully funded by the town of Shrewsbury. Recognizes responsibilities, reorganizes responsibilities, and creates a standalone recreation department, and adds capacity to our water and sewer divisions, including environmental, regulatory, and safety coordinator to manage quality, water quality, source protection, water conservation, emergency response planning, and customer outreach. We're really fortunate to be able to take on these initiatives. Many of these commitments were made by the board when we went through the operational override conversation, providing more emphasis on recreation, climate initiatives, energy management, and continued public safety initiatives to ensure the quality of life through the police and fire department. So moving in the second two goal areas of the Board of Selectmen for economic growth and effective government, the budget proposes to meet challenges by fully funding a second assistant town planner position, opening the new police station and associated positions and infrastructure on the administrative side of things. and infrastructure on the administrative side of things. Staffs and manages enhance voting opportunities for state and federal elections. Fiscal year 23 will bring the midterm election cycle at the federal level and other state elections. So we have enhanced funding to be able to manage early voting opportunities and mail-in voting options for residents. Establishes the human resources department, which is part of the long-range plan in the 2018 organizational assessment, and establishes a fleet maintenance division. And while I completely understand that the fleet maintenance division is behind the scenes, I think this is a critical step forward in continuing to put resources and emphasis where they need. Up until really January of this year, fleet maintenance was just a subpart of the highway division, which is really a historical model that many cities and towns use, as the highway division always had the most need for internal fleet maintenance. But as we look at our fleet, highway is only one part of it. Obviously, fire, other Department of Public Works, police, you know, and each of our departments have some type of motor vehicle needs, and managing those appropriately is important. Helps save costs and help manage our efficiency through that fleet. So how does that really break out from a number standpoint? There's several changes that I'll point out as we work through the budget process when we're reallocating from a budgetary standpoint and creating new departments, which provide greater financial transparency on where we spend our dollars. The first area that I'd like to highlight under that category is really the separation of human resources from the town managers' department. So you'll, you'll see that town managers reduced by $134,000 and human resources increases by $215,000. So that $134,000 really just moves down to human resources, and then the additional funds come to fund the human resources coordinator position that was established partway through fiscal year 22. The reduction in the Board of Selectmen budget is attributable to the change where we funded strategic plan, put funds in place for the strategic plan in fiscal year 22, and that opportunity will present itself moving forward as we move between that election cycle with midterm elections and having lesser costs. So we'll have future opportunities there as well. Many of the other departments in administration and finance are nearly level funded. You'll see the large increase in elections and registration. So those early voting opportunities, which are important, are costly. So the increase that you'll see there for this high election cycle is $76,065. The bottom line there is operating support. These are dollars that support both the Shrewsbury Public Schools and town operations, and the vast majority of that increase, over $800,000 of the 1.1 million, is associated with health insurance. So total administration and finance increase is just a little over $1 million. Again, 850,000 of that total expenditure increases related to health insurance, which is common in this functional category of our budget. With regards to public safety, you'll see significant increases within the police department associated with additional officers being brought on. The largest year-over-year funding increase from both a dollar and a percentage basis for any department is within the Shrewsbury Fire Department, and this just continues the evolution and build-out of the model that we put into place when we sought the SAFER grant. This grant was, in the creation of those four positions, also created the original four lieutenant positions, required renegotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. So we're really moving into the final stages of that first implementation of those four additional firefighters in fiscal year 23. Retirement numbers are down if we compare year over year to last year's annual town meeting budget, but we made those adjustments in the fall. We will be funding pensions at its normal cost times two, really. So we're continuing to provide additional extra funding to the pension system in compliance with the state parax request as we look at our total funding for the first few full years of achieving, fully funding for that system. The Department of Public Works, as we talked about earlier, has some of the most notable increases year over year. The half FTE represents a custodial position partway, halfway through the year as we open the new police station. The forestry division is really a consolidation of funds that were throughout a number of public works departments. So we're consolidating those and trying to truly allocate costs into one central budget, and it includes funding for the tree planting program, which is about $5,000, 10% of the total year-over-year increase. Public Works Administration, one FTE is the second or is the Assistant Department of Public Works Director. Fleet maintenance adds a half FTE that used to have a position that swung between fleet maintenance and highway, so we're fully allocating that to fleet maintenance. The highway division reductions that's shown here is attributable to the costs that used to be associated with fleet maintenance. Street lighting continues to decline year over year as we pay off the investment in LED lights that went into place five years ago. And the cemetery has the creation of additional cemetery program manager to manage both operations and business transactions for that line of business for the town. Community development, planning and economic development, that numerical increase of $78,000 is attributable to funding the second assistant planning, second assistant town planner position, and a behind-the-scenes reallocation of how we use planning board fees. Previously, through fiscal year 22, planning board fees came in and funded as assistant planner position. However, they were really intended for inspectional activities that are handled through the engineering division. So we've reallocated those dollars to properly fund planning review inspections through the engineering department, and are fully funding the planning department through the tax levy. Within the human services realm, we've tried to provide more clarity through the budget process as we create a standalone parks and recreation department. Parks and Recreation moving forward will be for those activities and events that are associated with, you know, human services and activities within the parks. Parks Maintenance will be those activities associated with maintenance of public grounds. So Parks Maintenance is a new budgetary area, but most of those funds were allocated under Parks and Recreation in previous years. There's modest increase in public health, council on aging. Really, if you look at all funding sources for the council on aging, it's a modest increase year over year. We're allocating more ongoing costs within the operating budget and relying less upon state aid and grants for the day-to-day operations of that department. Veteran Services reduction is a reflection on the benefits being distributed. We're in a much lower need now than we have been in previous years, and that's reflected in the Chapter 115 benefits that are being issued. So this is really a service-based adjustment. We do receive a 75% reimbursement from the state in the following year, and those numbers have been declining year over year. So those services are still be available, and we can respond to any increases year over year, but we'll take the opportunity to reduce that and reallocate those funds for other purposes when we have the opportunity. The Shrewsbury Library budget funds all statutory requirements to remain a certified library, including materials. So that's all human services departments. And then finally, before utilities, debt service, again, large reductions with the association of the payoff of the Shrewsbury Public High School on both principal and interest side. So I can pause there before we go into utilities, or I can?
I can go into utilities, and then we can just take off.
Okay, sure. So utilities are funded, as most folks know, through fees that are associated with particular services that we provide. So solid waste, the revenue sources are bulky waste stickers, the sale of recycling bins, and the largest source being pay-as-you-throw bags, and then stormwater, water and sewer, all rate-based fees, your water bill, your sewer bill, and your stormwater bill. So right now, each one of these categories, with the exception of solid waste, is showing year-over-year reduction, but by the time we get to fiscal projection two, those will likely be at or slightly above fiscal year 22 levels as we finalize the total funding available and capital improvements that we want to make. We are proposing FTE increases across all utility aspects of our operations. We propose to establish the first solid waste program manager. It's been very successful in other towns in both improving quality of services, securing grants from the Commonwealth and other entities, and managing service demands. We feel we may have the opportunity to bring some service activities in-house that are currently managed by our vendor and provide greater services to our residents in doing so. We will be, as I mentioned earlier, providing more yard waste disposal opportunities, both from duration of curbside collection and opportunities to deliver yard waste to locations, you know, that the town offers, and folks can drop them off there. We have positions to meet statutory and other water quality requirements, adding a position within sewer to help with those ongoing responsibilities. So as our public infrastructure system grows and as the complexities of managing a water system increase year over year, we are responding. I don't see these increases, you know, being a multi-year and needing to continue to increase year after year. As Mr. Rowley continues to, one, make great improvements to the water and sewer departments, and, two, balance out his needs for those departments, these numbers, you know, should remain steady in the years to come. That's the conclusion of my report. I'll move back to the summary level analysis and you'll be answering questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, questions or comments? Ms. Cassavan.
Yeah, Mr. Mizikar, we spoke a bit, seems like a while ago, about sewer infrastructure needs, and I'm just, you know, the rates of the sewer rate, the sewer commission raised the rates to be able to meet those needs, and I'm just wondering if we're going to be on track to do that, and any updates on what projects or things are going to be happening?
Yeah. So within sewer, we certainly are proposing a balanced budget. We are taking advantage of the new sewer rate that was put in place for this fiscal year in July. With regards to capital improvements, we're continuing to focus on our key pump stations of Rolf Avenue, Maple Avenue, and Harvey Place. We're finalizing design. Those are major investments in the future, millions of dollars in each one of those. We continue to benefit from our partnership with the Upper Blackstone and improvements that are being made at the Westboro Treatment Plant, and those have been, you know, increasing our cost year over year, and we're able to manage those with, with the higher rates.
I can wait if anybody else has some questions.
No, go ahead. If you have another question, go ahead.
Sure. I know we spoke a bit in our workshop about this, but the additional positions in the police department, I think it should be interesting for the public to hear about how we're handling the, the social worker aspect.
Sure.
Because those three positions that you spoke of aren't social workers.
Correct. Yep. So fiscal year 22, we funded a social worker position, and we are working through the final phases of partnering with, oh, let's escape in mind.
Isn't it advocates?
Yeah, advocates group, where we'll secure a grant for a three-year period to fund that social worker position, so that person will be an ongoing part of our organization. Ultimately, will become a Town of Shrewsbury employee, or that position will be, you know, become established, but we'll take advantage of that grant for the next three years. And that'll also, that grant will also give us the opportunity in fiscal year 23 or beyond to consider increasing the number of social workers that we have within the police department if demand shows that we need to. So we want to get that one person up and running, assess the needs of the department, understand how we're going to use that function and individual, and then, you know, see what our needs are from there. Those three positions within the police department are responsive to some of the feedback that we've received from residents. Chief Anderson would allocate one of the patrol positions to start the traffic division, so it'd be a multi-year initiative. We'd be looking to add two or three additional patrol officers to that division with appropriate supervision to begin to, again, address some of the needs that we've heard so often over the last year from residents.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, I'm good.
Oh, okay.
Mr. DePaul? Couple of questions. I probably was looking right at it under administration and finance, but I don't see it. Where is the assistant town manager for finance or budget, whatever?
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't type it right, but where, where is that in the budget?
It's, it's within the town manager's budget line item.
Okay, all right. So with the moving the human resources out, whatever, just?
Right, yeah. So that's a little hard to track, and, you know, so that's hard to track, and then those changes that we made in parks and recreation and fleet maintenance make the budget a little hard to track year over year. But yes, so the both assistant town manager and the town manager position are funded through that line item, along with principal department assistant and admin assistant.
And then, if I could, on the fleet maintenance, that's, I know we're adding, probably adding people, but that's primarily reallocating resources, staff.
That's correct.
So instead of reporting to highway or wherever, they're, they're going to be fleet maintenance.
That is absolutely correct.
It's just enhancing the service and just making its own entity. Okay.
So some of the other DPW departments that had funds directly attributable to the maintenance of their vehicles were pulled into fleet maintenance as well, and we are actually, Justin Dobson in the Board of Selectmen Town Manager's Office is, is working on a data set to help us build the fleet maintenance division, track individual repair costs on a vehicle-by-vehicle basis. But you're right, to your question, it's only an increase of a half a FTE, and the rest of the resources were just put into that new budgetary department from other aspects of the organization.
Okay. I guess one last question. I'm, I'm not quite following the increase in the fire department.
Sure.
Budget, because the SAFER grant, the current SAFER grant, we started off at, I might get the number right, but 100%, 75%, whatever, we went down to zero this year, right? Reimbursement from the federal government.
We don't reach zero until January 1st of 2020.
Okay.
A year from now.
Then, I understand the thing about the lieutenant positions, but can you explain why we're adding three people in the police department, and it's got a small increase in the fire department?
Yeah, well, there's, there's two, there's two things going on. One, the police department budget increase isn't reflective of any wage adjustments because we're in a contract negotiation year.
Okay.
So that could be a six-figure number, given the base salary of, of police officers being, you know, almost $4 million. So that isn't in the budget yet until we finalize those negotiations. The fire department is almost the opposite of that. We have so many people moving up steps because we had to create new tables when we created the lieutenant's position and adjusted the captain's position. It's just we're moving into those higher-cost years. So we're taking on the final 35% of four firefighters' positions and and Lieutenants and Captains are working their way through steps. Um, and, um, thankfully, this is, this is certainly not a negative thing. We have a, a, most of our new firefighter fighters come in with four-year degrees. We have educational incentives for those, so, um, as folks retire and we bring new positions on, we're not necessarily seeing that normal reduction from a high-paid firefighter to a lower-paid firefighter is kind of offset. But, yeah, those are two things.
So that safer grant absorbing, when we absorb the final part of our pa- of the full share,
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's maybe a quarter of that or less, right?
Of the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's roughly about a hundred thousand dollars.
Was that much?
Less than, a little bit, eighty thousand dollars, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? A quick question, so in terms of modeling this out, these additional positions have been modeled out, still meeting the commitment?
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
I should have, yeah, I really should have started there. This, the, this budget not only is balanced for the year, but, um, when the, when we established the, the goals and parameters for the override, we committed to four years. I've modeled out a fifth year, um, and, and the override, the current override covers the fifth year. So not only does it meet the initial commitment, but it extends it by one year. So, uh, yep, we have modeled, I actually have, you know, modeled this out, you know, you know, four additional years in advance.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Um, just a couple of questions on, start with water quality, unit delec- unidirectional flushing. That's still built in the, the twenty-three budget, right? Would continue to go, uh, with unidirectional flushing? I know we've done one full round through, but that's something we'd continue to see. Is that, from a cost standpoint, expected to continue at the same co- run rate, lower? Or is that just carry forward at the same number?
So it actually will be lower.
Okay.
But we're switching from a project-based initiative where we had a third-party vendor perform unidirectional flushing, and we're going to do it with our own in-house staff. One, we can be more opportunistic. Um, two, we have, you know, the skills, we did some training with the, you know, contractor, and it, you know, we will have our own people in the field exercising valves, doing the unidirectional flushing, uh, which will make us, um, have a better understanding of the system and, and actually, in the long run, be able to do it a lot cheaper than it was through that service contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we put almost, I, I believe it was six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in place for water quality initiatives in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. The vast majority of that went to unidirectional flushing.
So the other thing that I'm hearing from the positions, that if you look at a cost-benefit analysis, that there's a method to the thought in terms of these positions are expected to, like, rants or be able to bring a lot of things in-house, like unidirectional flushing, don't have the third party, and that may be something you can provide a little more detail on in terms of what these positions, we think they'll do. And also expand, um, the level of services that our community's looking for as well as internally that we can do to service our own fleet. So I think that's good. Last question, um, water quality on Hex Chrome PFOS, where does that, where do you see that in terms of maybe next year or, or the years after that?
So, uh, I intend to bring to you in, in March, uh, our, our recommendation with regards to Hex Chrome.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are s- in the process of piloting solutions for PFOS. Um, and, um, that should wrap up within the next few months. We are poised to take advantage of this federal infrastructure funding when we have the opportunity to do that, um, for either of those projects, but we're moving towards our recommendation and, uh, on Hex Chrome for the board. Uh, we would have the DPW leadership in as well as our consultants that did the pilot study, um, within the month of March.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious, um, if you can speak to any challenges you had in developing this budget. I know that, you know, we are fortunate to have had an override passed last May, um, but I'm sure there were still some difficult decisions that had to be made because money's not limitless. Um, if you could just speak a few minutes briefly about some of the challenges you ran into or decisions you made.
Yeah, so we definitely cut, you know, from the budget, so I pulled up, you know, on the screen now, we had a hundred-and-thirty-five-point-one million dollars in budget requests, and we funded about seven-hundred thousand dollars less than that to stay within those caps that the board set in our commitment through the override. Um, so, you know, there are many opportunities, um, that hopefully will still, you know, be on the table for, uh, the future. Um, I think the vast majority of these positions are still just kind of getting us to current standards and expectations. There's not a lot of new growth or, or new activities. There certainly is some, and we're, um, very fortunate to do that. Um, I haven't had a, a, a significant opportunity to talk one-on-one with departments, so I don't, if you wouldn't mind, I don't want to go into some of the positions that I didn't specifically fund, but there, again, was over seven-hundred thousand dollars. You know, the municipal budget, uh, is, um, only about thirty million dollars, you know, when you add up all those departments, so, you know, that represents almost, uh, you know, three-and-a-half percent reduction from what departments requested. The other thing that I really didn't talk about, but which was a challenge going through the budget process, you know, everyone, um, will feel it, and that's inflation. One of the biggest inflationary, uh, aspects of the budget, uh, comes, um, in like a seventeen percent increase that we had to put in for, you know, gasoline and diesel fuel. Based up, you know, we, we go out, we partner with the City of Worcester, uh, we leverage the buying power of both municipalities, and, you know, we're still experiencing about a seventeen percent year-over-year increase. That's about seventy thousand dollars. So as we, our fleet gets greener, which we can talk about in the Capital Improvement Plan, that will certainly help, but that seventy thousand dollars is, you know, more than a position, you know, with full benefits, so, um, it was a much easier year, but it wasn't necessarily, you know, easy where we could fund everything that departments, uh, wanted to, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I just follow up on that.
Sure.
It, we're probably never going to get to a point where you're going to be able to fully fund all the requests of departments, because some of those things are, um, and not that they're not necessary, but some of them are kind of like planting the seed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're saying, hey, look, if I want, if, if you really want me to go high level, this is where I need to be. Um, so there's always going to be those kinds of, um, shortfalls. That one, this year seems a little bit lower than usual, um, by my memory, but, um, I think on the incremental approach, being careful is, is, is the way to go, but, um, I know a lot of the, at least in the past, department heads would, they might want someone right away, but they realize they got to plant the seed and, and start to create the awareness, um, that, that helps, so. Um, I don't leave people with the impression that the departments are inadequately staffed, and I knew you didn't say that, but.
Yep.
Um, because they, they didn't get some of those, um, requests funded.
Uh, we, I did highlight the kind of higher costs within, within the Fire Department, and, and what I didn't say there was, you know, that we do have to seriously consider, you know, four additional firefighters at some point in time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it won't be as challenging the next time because we won't have to make all those other changes. It would really kind of just be the cost of those four additional firefighters, um, and won't have those ancillary or other impacts on the Lieutenant and Captain's positions. Um, but, you know, I'm happy that we're increasing the police staffing levels, but I, uh, we have applied for another safer grant. The safer grants are better funded, they have been in the past. It's three full years at a hundred percent funding. So if we do have the opportunity to be successful, which I hope we are, you know, we could move sooner rather than later, but, um, that would put a third firefighter on a truck from Station Two, uh, excuse me, Station Three, and I think that's critically important as we see that aspect of the community growing. That's your first responders to the new Edgemere development. That'd be your first responders to Four-O-Nine South Street. So it's kind of, I do have concerns about thinking of putting two firefighters in a truck, sending them out to those large complexes to, to, you know, deal with situations there. So as those developments come online and the tax resources come available, grant resources become available, I think that's something we'll have to pursue.
Yep.
Agreed. Great, well, thank you. Next item we'll go to is new business, and we'll get back in order. Review and Act on the Recommendation to Fund Financial Services Enhancement with the American Rescue Plan Act Funding. I can hand this over to you, Mr. Mizikar.
Sure. So board members, you, you know, we brought a four-point-one-million-dollar Phase One proposal, uh, for, you know, spending the five-and-a-half million dollars that we've received, uh, so far through the Rescue Plan Act, and, um, we have a new Treasurer Collector, Amy Perkins, who's been on board with us and, uh, identified an opportunity for both, uh, customer service improvements and business operations improvements that could have, uh, as significant of an effect, uh, through this purchase um, as reducing total staffing levels required for the department by at least a half FTE. So, uh, what this proposal is, is for a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars for the acquisition of additional software modules, uh, for our financial software system. It's really two modules. Um, one is, uh, a cashiering module that would automate internal business processes within the Treasurer Collector's Department. Uh, and the second, I think, which is more exciting, um, because it's customer-facing, would allow taxpayers to create accounts and access historical, uh, account information online. So that will automate and enable and empower residents, um, who oftentimes, uh, you know, during this time of the year, call us and say, how much did I pay for motor vehicle excise tax last year? They'll be able to go in and access that system on themselves, be able to create an account, access your real estate tax bill, um, and make a real estate tax payment, um, directly to us through an ACH. We also, which I did not mention in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, are proposing, uh, sufficient funding to cover that ACH fee, so residents no longer would be charged if they do the debit transaction and processing their real estate payments online. So it's really kind of a, a, um, building, um, customer service-oriented and, and town operations, multi- mutual beneficial initiative that, um, she has proposed, and I fully support, uh, the fiscal year, uh, future fiscal year budgets will have sufficient, uh, funding to cover the ongoing cost of these, uh, modules, but, uh, this request would be for the use of one-time funds to cover this upfront cost of cashiering and, um, customer support, or, excuse me, uh, customer accounts.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there, is there a motion?
Motion, we approve the recommendation to fund financial services enhancements with the American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Second.
I'm moving second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Board members, if you don't mind, we'll move Agenda Item Eleven to our next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay.
And then we'll get to correspondence. The, um, item number twelve, letter dated January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager, regarding snow report, seven inches of snow. It's always, uh, we spend, the total spend in, was about fifty-two thousand, about seventy-five hundred an inch. It's always interesting to see what we spend on that. But again, as mentioned at the top of the meeting, just want to thank all the, the drivers, the highway mechanics, the admin staff, Water, Sewer, and Parks Divisions as well for all their help. So we appreciate, um, keeping the roads safe. Next item is an email dated January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, from Keith Willett, Twenty, Westmont Road, regarding sidewalk and crosswalk snow removal and pedestrian safety generally. So maybe we can follow up with him. Uh, so noted, next item, letter received January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, from Timothy DeChamps, Executive Director of the Mosquito Control Project, regarding budget, budget notification indicating that Shrewsbury's assessment would be ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-three dollars, it looks like, in fiscal year twenty-three, so noted. And the next item is a letter received February second, twenty-twenty-two, from Nick Repetka, Highway Division, snow report, the sixteen inches of snow. Um, that was a hundred-and-eleven thousand, about seven thousand an inch, so noted. Uh, next item, all bill correspondence, item sixteen through twenty-eight, regarding the proposed bill comments. As we've indicated earlier, we appreciate the time that residents have taken to give us their feedback, and we have, we have heard the feedback, um, and continue, um, as we move forward through this process. And from this meeting, we'll also, now that's been read into correspondence, we will respond to the individuals that have sent us emails or letters, so thank you. And then the last, uh, set of correspondence, EBA decisions, item numbers twenty-nine through thirty-three, various EBA decisions, all dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, so noted. So, board members, that's all we have on the agenda, and if there's nothing else to discuss, entertain a motion to adjourn.
If you're moved to say that.
Moving second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you for joining us. Good night.